Okay, that's good to know. Alright, just so you know, Rhonda's gonna start recording now.
Okay.
I'm gonna go grab a coffee then.
I'll hit broadcast in a minute. While we have you, Matthew, we have a plan for future guard that we were hoping to get a signature on. If you have a chance to stop by or we could bring it to you. Whatever.
I can stop by.
Thank you.
Let me look at my schedule over the next couple of days.
Okay, sounds good.
I will send you an email.
Awesome, thank you.
Are we gonna have enough people?
Well, we've got Quorum.
Yep, we have Quorum.
Take it.
Well, so Mr. Martelli is not gonna be here, Ms. LeBlanc is not gonna be here. Whoa, Megan's sharing her screen.
Is my screen busy or?
No, it looks good.
It's doing the right thing.
Okay.
Which is always a concern, I get.
Right.
Alright, so it is now six o'clock. I guess. That we should get started. So I'd like to call the November, December 8th, 2020, meeting of the Auburn Planning Board to order. We'll begin with a roll call vote. Starting with Mr. Finnegan.
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Seer.
Evan Seer, present.
Mr. Staples.
Dana Staples, present.
Mr. Bergeron.
Are they Bergeron, present?
So, Mr. Bergeron is normally a, an associate member. Seeing as how there are, we do not have our full complement of regular members here tonight. I would propose that Mr. Bergeron act as a regular member tonight, meaning that he will be able to make motions and vote. Is the board within agreement with that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So, moving on to item number two on the agenda, the minutes. If. Unless anyone has comment on the minutes, I would like a motion to approve them.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 10th, 2020 meeting.
Second.
Mr. Seer, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. So, item number three, our first public hearing for the evening is site plan special exception. For our proposed 18.9 acre, 4.995 solar array at 1040 Perkins Ridge Road, PID 295-004. By Borrego Solar Systems, Inc. On a parcel that is split between the agriculture and resource protection and low-density country residential zoning districts. So we'll start with the staff report. Actually, before we get there. Mr. Staples.
Yeah, so this is, the landowner for this, for this agenda item is a company, a family company. And one of the members of the family is a friend of mine, so I just wanted to bring that up to the board and in case the board wanted me to sit out on this item. I believe I could act impartially, but it's totally up to the board.
Thoughts and comments from the board?
No objection.
Yeah, no objection with that.
No objection from myself either.
Okay, hearing no objections, we'll proceed. Both staff?
Yeah, so, like you said, the project is just under a five-megawatt solar installation on Perkins Ridge Road, which is in the ag zone. The parcel itself is just under 19 acres and it's split between ag and low-density country residential. And one thing that we had discussed in your staff report is that solar is permitted in the ag zone as a special exception. And the low-density country residential zoning district permits the special exception uses that are allowed in the ag zone also. So technically, solar is allowed in the low-density country residential as well. Most of the low-density country parcels are bordering ag land, so I don't think it's a big concern, but it's something we didn't necessarily discuss during the ordinance process. So something that we might wanna chat about at a later date. In your staff reports, you'll notice that we had completed the report before the applicant had a chance to respond to the comments and questions. So we thought it would be a good opportunity to go through those items and update you on the status of them. We included the solar ordinance in your packets and as part of the staff report, we broke down the ordinance requirements that are in that solar ordinance and how the project addresses them. So the first item that we discussed was the visual impact. So for visual impact, the ordinance says that the applicant has to minimize any visual impacts that are associated with the project. And that, it has to be a reasonable effort that's shown to the planning board, so you're tasked with making that decision. So, what they have proposed is they're preserving an existing tree line. The site currently, as you know, is an apple orchard, which isn't necessarily what we would consider to be a forested buffer. Having said that, they're not providing any specific buffering for the sides of the project. So we just wanna make sure that that standard is addressed to the satisfaction of the planning board. They're keeping existing apple trees outside of the fence and they're also constructing a seven-foot-high fence with wood, chain-link fence with wood-colored slats. And the landowner has reviewed the project and doesn't have any issues with the buffering and feels that this has been addressed. But it's something the planning board should talk through and make sure that that standard's met. The second item that we talked about was the operations and maintenance plan. Just something that's kind of like a nitty-gritty detail, I guess. The format it's presented in is a pricing summary, which isn't what we would see as a typical binding O and M plan. There's items in that pricing summary that could be removed or altered in a final plan. So we just recommended that either it be adjusted or the planning board add a condition of approval that a final O and M plan be prepared once the project is developed or, once the project is about to begin construction. They had just said that the final O and M plan won't be developed until the system owner is determined, so that's why they've kind of left it as a pricing summary. The third item are the fire.
Megan, I apologize for interrupting.
Yeah, no.
For everyone's edification, can you please? Explain, so you're saying O and M, which I'm assuming means operations and maintenance, yes?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everyone. Was aware of that.
I apologize.
I had a question of clarification, was the? Okay, so that is a pricing summary. Is the decommissioning also presented as a pricing summary?
I don't believe so. It didn't look like it was, but I can.
That must be my confusion, that's fine, continue.
Okay. Sorry, I, yeah, I apologize for that acronym, sign off. The third item are the fire and electrical codes. So we just wanted to make sure that those were all addressed or will be addressed as part of the building permit process. They've reached out to the fire department and just to make sure that everything's addressed, we recommend adding a condition of approval that the project be installed in accordance with all applicable fire and electrical codes. The fourth item are the abandonment and decommissioning standards, which includes a financial certi for removing the facility when it's decommissioned. And where it's in the ag zone, restoring the land back to prime farmland if it's applicable. Once the system is removed, they're proposing to reseed the disturbed areas. And they don't plan on removing existing topsoil during construction or decommissioning aside from the gravel roads and the equipment area. And they said that they will be preserving that topsoil and then putting it somewhere else on the site. We just need further information on a financial certi for removing the facility when it's decommissioned and restoring any disturbed farm soils. So however that may look, I guess, is, it's kind of left open-ended in the ordinance because we don't really know what's gonna happen in the future, but it's something that the planning board spent some time making sure was in that ordinance for projects in the ag zone. The fifth item pertains to lot coverage, and this was just a clarification to make sure that it included all of the impervious area and it does. And it will still be under that 30% threshold that we set for lot coverage for the solar installations. And the biggest item that we requested some more information on where the projects in the ag zone is the vegetative cover plan and the use of prime soils. So, the ordinance requires a plan, it doesn't specify the format, but it requires a plan that demonstrates that forested areas will be replanted and that prime farm soils are preserved throughout the life of the project. So we asked the applicant if they'd be willing to talk through the process of citing the installation in its proposed location. So the ordinance requires that the least productive ag soils be considered first for solar. And so we had asked them to describe how the topsoil will be preserved and maintained, some plans for co-mingling agriculture and energy generation. And they've laid out a process in the updated document that you received that has their responses to our draft staff report. They're planning on maintaining the prime soils with the, using the screw system, minimizing the size of the gravel road, maintaining the existing grass seed bank, and not removing the soil, de-compacting the soils before the end of construction and mowing two to three times annually, which is the same as a hayfield. So, in the staff report, they laid out their process for, like I said, for locating on those prime farm soils. And the landowner has parcels that are in this area and they all had prime farm soils. And this was the best location for solar because it didn't require any clearing and it was close to the existing grid infrastructure. They don't have any plans to co-mingle agriculture and solar uses, so the planning board will have to decide if the process that they've laid out meets the ordinance requirements, that the least productive ag soils are used first. And lastly, just, we asked them to coordinate with the addressing officer to make sure that the solar portion of the project is addressed separately from the residences. So with this, we just recommend that the planning board discuss the responses that we received from the applicant and any other questions that the board might have and make a decision on the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the planning board have any questions for staff?
Yeah, I had one thing. When you were talking about the O and M plan. The, maybe this is a question for the applicant, but they said that the final O and M plan is not developed until the system owner is determined. What does that mean? Who's this, what is a system owner? I would think we would know who that was at this point.
Yeah, I had thought that Borrego Solar was the system owner, but I'm not sure how their ownership process works. Cause we, for other solar projects, we've received O and M plans during the planning work process. So that would probably be a question for the applicant and I see that he's raised his hand, so.
I can get, ask that again when he comes in.
Thank you. Any other questions for the board? Or the staff from the board? Nope?
I guess one other, so. In the staff report, you always ask other city departments to review this. And so, I noticed that there were no real comments for any of this stuff from the fire department, but yet in the, in the the ordinance, it requires a 20-foot road, a 20-foot wide road to access this and the plans are proposing a 14, I believe, foot wide road or 12-foot wide road. So, I guess I just wanted to bring attention to that because it seemed strange to me that the fire department wouldn't make that an issue. So if the fire department's okay with it, I'm okay with it, but I just thought that was a strange omission.
Right, so we had mentioned that to the fire department and that's why we put the comments that they had on the previous solar plan. So they basically pulled the comments for solar installations that are in the National Fire Code. And they put those for other solar projects and the National Fire Code does require that 20-foot width for the access road. So that's why we recommended the condition that they address all the fire department concerns, if there are any concerns. So hopefully that will come up as a concern because it is in the fire code.
Megan, I guess I'm gonna take it back a step and say. It's my understanding that. You know, we can't just say we want them to address any concerns of the fire department, and yes, that's in the National Fire Code. But because it's an ordinance itself, in order for us to approve the plan as is, that would require a waiver.
Right.
And did they, I didn't see anything about them seeking a waiver for that.
I don't believe so. No.
And we, we still have no communication from the fire department?
No, they said that they're coordinating with the fire department, so I'm not sure what the status of that is.
Well, I guess my point being that it's sort of a moot point what the fire department says.
Right, understand.
Because we require in the ordinance, so unless there's a waiver granted, it doesn't matter what the fire department says with regard to reduced width of the road.
Right.
Yeah, so.
But I, I would, so I agree, Mr. Seer, but is it also true that we actually don't know what the fire department thinks about this?
Oh yeah, we don't, but I guess it's the kind of thing where, you know, the fire department could say that they don't mind.
Yeah.
But it would still require a waiver.
It still requires a waiver, I totally understand that, I just was clarifying that, thank you. Anything else for staff? Okay, if not, then I think we should bring the applicant in and hear from the applicant.
I think he should be here. David, are you here?
I am here. For some reason though, my wife's photo is in the Zoom.
Is Matt Swansburg with you as well?
I, he's supposed to be.
Okay, he's got his hand raised, I just wasn't sure if.
Okay.
I'm bringing him in now.
I'm gonna start my video so I can, yeah, there I am. Thanks so much, Megan. For everybody, my name is David Albrecht, professional engineer, the principal civil engineer at Borrego Solar. We're situated in Lowell, Massachusetts, and right now I'm actually in northern Vermont, have been since March. And I'd, I think you've all seen the plans, I can present a set of plans that's got some color to it, if you, if anybody really cares to see that. I see I got my shared screen here. Screen one. Okay, can everybody see this?
There we go.
Okay, so if everybody can see this, I'll just walk through a couple of things and I think as I go, I will look to address your questions. So the site, and I'm gonna, I'm just gonna move forward one sheet because it is an aerial with the project on top of it, it's a little bit easier to sort of visualize everything. So it's an existing apple orchard, it's more of a wholesale-type apple orchard, it's actually not doing very well. The Apple Ridge LLC, the owners have you know, just have speaking with them, have told us that it's probably about 100 years old, it's been an active apple orchard for about 100 years. It was once a potato farm and really wasn't viable for that due to just the kinds of soils. And also, you know, when it got dry, those soils kind of got dried up. It's right on the border of being a prime soil, we did, we did do testing and provided that to the city, so you should have that in your package. And basically, the wholesale apple orchard business is not doing that well and this is, you know, how the the landowners can, you know, keep the rest of their property, which is much better soils, and they're actually right across the street and then further up Ridge Road, they own more parcels. So this was the parcel that was the least. I guess, this was the most feasible for solar, from a soil perspective as well as some others. So, the project is about, it's a 4.99 megawatt AC system. It's just shy of 19 acres inside the fence. The fence, as Megan said, is a seven-foot chain-link fence. We were, we had proposed in our response that the portion, I don't think I made it very clear, but really the northerly fence, which is see if this'll work. This fence right here would have the wood slats in it. Because of the adjacency, oops, apologize, of the butters up here. Interestingly enough, this, this home is, one of the owners' names is Albrecht, which is my last name. That's never happened in 40-some-odd years of working. So we were proposing that this northerly fence, which is really the only view that those residences have of the project. And the project does fall away, the topography, the northwest end is about 30 feet lower than the road. It's not quite as much at the west corner, but it's also behind some trees down in this area. There isn't a butter way down here, and there really are no butters across the street on Perkins Ridge Road. The racking is about eight and a half to nine, nine and a half feet tall at its highest point. They're all situated to the south, they're static, they do not move. Each of the racks is founded in the ground with a screw that's basically drilled into the ground, four of them per rack. And there's no concrete used, any of the trenching that's for the conduit is all underground, that is, there's no concrete associated with that. Really, the only place there would be any concrete is the, in the equipment areas, I'm gonna zoom in here. And we have an equipment area here. And we have another equipment area here. And there's about 1,000 square feet, I believe, of maybe a little less than that, of concrete associated with those equipment pads. Access to the site is from an existing driveway entrance right here. We're gonna improve that, so I had a very nice conversation with David O'Connell of the fire department. And, cause his concern was vegetative cover and making sure that, that inside the fencing, that there were two things that needed to happen. One was that we, we wanted to make, he wanted to make sure that at least two to three times a year, the vegetation within the fences is mowed. And that's generally what we do, just a standard O and M contract. He also wanted to maintain at least a 20-foot clear area between the fence and the racking around the entire inside of the fencing. He had no issues with the 14-foot wide road. Fire, a fire department on, in NFPA 1 is allowed to waive requirements of NFPA 1 and that's the only one that, that I, that we talked about. The radii that we're presenting for access meets NFPA 1 Exhibit D requirements. The length of the, these hammerheads, I guess we need to call them, that meets those requirements as well. So the 20-foot, whether or not, I know, Mr. Seer, you were mentioning that it's a requirement of the ordinance and we would need a waiver. I hadn't seen, I hadn't caught that and I haven't seen that before, so if that is the case, you know, we certainly want to add that to our request for approval. So we, we told Mr., I told Mr. O'Connell that we would re-buck the gravel driveway in front from Perkins Ridge Road to the, to the access gate right here. We would make sure that's constructed, that it's reconstructed so it can sustain a 65,000-foot, 65,000-pound wheelload, which is again, NFPA requirement for these roads. And they all will be designed by a chief technical engineer. Our, the section we've shown, the drawings, is generally what we've been finding, chief technical engineers are requiring on our other main projects. So this is really no different from that perspective. We will be clearing all the trees, the apple orchard and the stumps inside the system area. We will not be removing any topsoil from the parcel. We'll, whatever we remove to build the road and the equipment areas will be placed elsewhere on site. More, more like, more than likely, it'll be in those places where the stumps need to be, you know, we can't have a hole right there. So those areas will be filled in with, with that material. I think, other than the utility poles, there'll be a series of utility poles along this side of the current driveway. There really is not a whole lot else to talk about, I'm just gonna maybe talk a little bit about the the O and M plan and the system owner. So, we're leasing this property from Apple Ridge Orchards LLC. Um, once this project is fully, um, permitted through the city, through the state, it's received, uh, you know, we've, we've made all of our payments, uh, for our interconnection, uh, study and so on and so forth. There's a number of different things that we have to do. We have an ALTA land title survey. Uh, a number of different things need to occur. We put this project on the market for somebody to own it. Now they can own it and ask us to build it, or they can own it and have someone else build it. But tho- that individual, that, I shouldn't say that individual, that entity is the system owner. And we don't mark, so that's why we don't know who it is at this point in time. At that point in time, uh, Borrego Solar also has over a gigawatt of solar projects in operations and maintenance across the country. And we will more than likely, more than probably ninety-five percent likely, to be the O and M provider here. And what I had, uh, communicated with Megan was that maybe there could be a condition, um, in an approval that requires that prior to construction, uh, an O and M contract, uh, be submitted, uh, uh, to the city. Uh, the reason I say that is because I was, we don't have anybody to have a contract with, and we don't know what that entity will want in their contract. We, we have gold-plated O and M contracts at thirty thousand dollars a year, uh, where they, somebody comes in, you know, every month. Uh, we have other ones that are five thousand dollars a year where, you know, aside from the mowing, there's an annual uh, inspection of the entire site versus doing it much more frequently. Uh, so that's, that's sort of why you got the pricing summary. It's, uh, anybody that we work with can pick and choose what they want or even add things that we don't even know they want. So that's, that's our hope is that that could be submitted, uh, for, you know, for satisfying that requirement. Um, and that's who the system owner is. But until that's done, I guess you could consider us the project owner. There's no system yet. The, uh, I think that was it's system owner, O and M, uh, fire department response and the waiver. I think those are the only things I heard from um, the planning board. With regards to the prime soils, um, I think I covered that. Um, I did have, uh, and I think Megan, you know, um, outlined it very well, um, also. Uh, I think it just comes down to this landowner had other property that was, uh, they had much better soils on those sites, uh, than didn't exist on this site. So I'm available for more questions.
Great, thank you. Um, any questions for Mr. Albrecht?
Uh, yes. Uh, I noticed that in the picture you are using, uh, what year is this from? It doesn't occur, it doesn't appear to be, uh, an updated aerial.
It is, uh, from 2020.
This is, this is from 2020?
That's the, I mean, that's, I shouldn't say that. It's a...
Oh yeah, so like, so I'll stop. So right here where the circle is, this buffering, all these trees uh, are, are clear cut.
Are you circling something?
I'm, I'm looking at your screen. So the bottom circle.
You, right here?
You've circled a house that was labeled the Finity something, something house.
Yeah, down here.
Yes.
Very southeast corner.
Right, and you, you just marked inside of a circle. Those trees don't appear on, um, the 2018 municipal aerial map. It, they're, they're complete, they're completely clear cut.
Uh, well, that's interesting because this is the latest, uh, well, this is the copyright. I shouldn't say that it's the date, the, the latest date. I'd have to look into that.
So, I, I guess, so follow-up question. Was the decision not to put any screening at the southern uh, end based on the presence of those trees in this, uh, aerial photograph?
Uh, that was part of it, uh, and certainly the other part of it was the fact that this is, um, let me just, uh, measure the distance away. I mean, it's, there's six hundred and fourteen feet away. They're two football feet away. Um, that's the second. Um, it's the, it's the vegetation. And I'm not sure if what was left with, uh, the trees that were taken down. I usually when sites are, are, uh, forested for their timber, they don't cut every tree down. Um, like, that does happen, but I can't imagine that that did. Um, they also have their own, uh, buffering around their, around their house, uh, too. And, um, I'm trying to remember what the, we go to a different page here. I don't know if I have an elevation on that down there. But we're at, uh, four hundred and eighty-five here. And one more page. Uh, four eighty, and then down here we're at four eighty. This is, uh, going downhill. So this is four seventy-five, so four seventy-eight, four seventy-six, four, but four seventy-four. So they're, they're almost on level with us. Um, and, uh, you know, two football fields away. This is our grading and drainage and erosion control plan. Uh, I didn't present that, but we, we've provided along the west side. Um, and a little bit down to the southwest, uh, erosion controls, uh, cause everything slopes from Perkins Ridge Road all the way to the west. It's fairly level, you know, a fairly planar slope the entire way.
Uh, Megan, when, at some point when we get back to the discussion, can you pull up the latest municipal aerial map?
Yep, I've got that up now so I can share it whenever.
Maybe we should do it now that we, uh, since, since we've got Mr. Albrecht.
Okay.
Right here.
Is it up on the map or?
Right, so, yeah, you see it, it with the exception of very few trees, it was, it was pretty much taken out.
And this isn't their property. This is the neighbor's property, but...
Right, no, I understand that. I, I guess, but by, my, my line of questioning is, um, primarily to, to understand why there was no buffer in place at the southern end. And it sounds like perhaps a different aerial map was being used that indicated there were a much larger buffer there.
Yeah, this looks, uh, it looks very interesting because, um, I'm looking at our map and everything to the west of the orchard is all forested.
Yep.
Um, I find it hard to believe that this entire area.
No, it was, it's not the entire, if you look, I, I don't know if you're able to...
I mean, I, I think there's, we have probably deciduous trees and we have some coniferous trees and maybe all the deciduous trees lost their leaves. I'm not saying that that's the case, right, where you, you were concerned, but I'm just concerned about the, you know, all the acres to the west of the orchard because I know that our landowner didn't cut the trees in that triangular area to the west of the orchard.
Um, yeah, I guess, as far as screening, right? So, um, there'd be no need for us to screen you against a large wood area, right? So I'm, I'm not worried about that western side of it.
Oh, I'm, I'm just saying that the differences in the, in, in the, you know, you, you take an aerial photograph uh, during the winter, it looks a lot different.
Right, no, I guess, I guess, so Megan, if you could zoom into the just northwest of what, what's referred to as the Finity property so that everyone can see. So, yeah, i- if you look to the west of the, the site, um, yeah, what you're seeing is, you're seeing deciduous trees that have lost their, their leaves. Um, but if, if you zoom in, you'll see that, that sort of rectangle there between the Finity property and the proposed project was...
Sorry, I lost my, uh, I don't have my Zoom feature.
All right.
Tried to double-click on it and it won't let me.
Okay. That's fine. I, I guess what I'm saying is, I, I, I understand what you're saying about the, the western side and how aerial photographs are different. I mean, there's not new to the planning board. Um, looking at aerial photographs at different times of year. Um, I, I think we're fairly familiar with what, what that looks like. Um, my concern being that that's what was a big block of essentially, um, evergreens that's been cut down. So, anyway, uh, that, that was my question. I guess the, the planning board can decide if they want to discuss that later, but...
Yeah, we would cer- we would certainly be amenable to adding, um, again, the, the, uh, the wood slats along there. Uh, we just find that something more concrete like that is, uh, well, certainly easier to maintain than planting trees and shrubs. Uh, many times they just don't last as long as we all would hope they would. Um, and they're usually only warranted for a certain period of time and, um, they don't really provide sort of the screening that we all hope. Um, and I think that the seven-foot fence, which by the way, I didn't mention it, it sits six inches above grade to allow, um, small critters to go back and forth. So it's seven and a half feet, it would be seven and a half feet of, uh, you know, a fairly opaque uh, fence with the, uh, wood slats in it.
We also, um, just quickly chiming in here, we have a member of the public here that, um, knows a lot about the area. And so he's been sending us some Q and As about the clearing and why that was done. So it might be helpful to bring him in.
Okay, um, so any more questions for Mr. Albrecht now? Do people, would people like to hear from Mr. Ricker? Who is the, whose family owns the actual property, I believe.
Yeah, that's correct.
Uh, I, I guess my question would be, are we, uh, is he acting as, uh, on behalf of the applicant or is he, uh, speaking as a member of the public? Um, only because we do have a public input section.
Yeah, I agree. I, I agree. I think that's, that's the proper question. Um, and I, I assume that's our place to decide. I don't know what, how people of, on the board feel about this. Um, I would be happy to consider him, uh, as part of the applicant, but I don't know if anybody else has a different thought.
I think it probably makes sense, uh, for him to talk, uh, along with the applicant, just in case, uh, they need to, uh, talk back and forth a little bit.
Yeah, we've been cour- uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Dave Albrecht again. We've been coordinating with Mr. Ricker all along. He's been involved in review of the plans and, and so on. So he's, I don't know that it, uh, there's a difference between acting, um, with us or acting as a public citizen.
Mr. Seer, I see you unmuted.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if he's, if he really has been working with the applicant and it sounds like he really is, uh, a party to this application, I have no objection to him, uh, jumping in and, and addressing the board right now. I don't know how well else feels, but that's...
Darren or, uh, sorry, Mr. Finnegan or Mr. Bergeron, are you all right with that?
Yeah, I think he might have a, a more pertinent answer to Evan's question about the clearing. So I think it'd be worth hearing with us.
I would definitely agree with that.
Okay, great. So, yeah, Megan, can we bring Mr. Ricker in?
Yep. He is here.
So, Mr. Ricker, if you want to unmute yourself, if you have anything to say, that would be great.
Good evening, members of the board. I am Harry Ricker and I am definitely a representative of our family, not a representative at large from the public. The, uh, property that, um, Jeff Gnome had cut fairly aggressively to our south that you were looking at was, uh, that is hardwood that's left there. It does meet the minimum cross-sectional area, I believe, so he didn't get in any trouble for, for clear cutting it. And I expect you would probably be amazed if you looked at it in July, once all the leaves were on the trees. Um, but, uh, it's a long ways over to their house and they, they, you know, I talked to them at length about being part of this project if it was gonna be a larger project. I try to work with all our neighbors as I find that's very important in modern agriculture. And, uh, um, so back when we first looked at it, I met with them and explained what we were up to. And they said that they were winding down their Christmas tree farm and both in retirement now and they had no desire to enter a new project like that, but they had no issues with us doing it and they weren't concerned. Um, weren't concerned that it was gonna be a problem. And, uh, but when you take pictures in April, that's what deciduous trees look like. And if there's any other questions I could answer at this point, I would be happy to do so.
Any questions from the board? Okay, um, with that, I'd like to thank you all and, um, we can move now to the, uh, public comment section. So at this time, I would like to ask any members of the public.
Well, I will, uh, I'll make a motion to open the public section, uh, public input section of the hearing.
Great, thank you, Mr. Seer. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public who are present um, and wish to comment on this project, to raise their hand and we will unmute you and allow you to speak.
We did receive, um, we only have one other member from the public here, um, but we did receive from Mr. Ricker, uh, Q and As. Um, and he had some good information about the prime soils. I don't know if the planning board wants us to read those into the record or if he'd like to explain those.
Uh, I, I'd be happy to hear. Actually, I was gonna ask at a later point if you could pull up the prime soils map, only because, uh, but I know that, uh, Mr. Ricker has expressed, uh, a concern with the regard to calling them prime soils, and I would tend to agree. I live in this neighborhood and there's not much around here that's particularly prime. And, uh, I, I think it could probably be put to bed. I tried to find the GIS layer with the prime soils, um, that the, the, the city keeps. Um, but it wasn't made public by Mrs. Moser on any of the public, uh, publicly accessible, um, GIS, uh, map layers, but, but I would assume that if we looked at those, we wouldn't find very much overlap with any, uh, prime soil, so. Um, since that was a, a, a point of concern, I, I definitely would like to hear from Mr. Ricker since he farms the land. But also staff is able to have easy access to that, uh, so we can get a visual as well. That'd be great.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Ricker, um, you did, you made four comments in the Q and A area. I wonder if you could read those in, starting with the one about the soil, but then I think the, the, uh, comment you made about the groundskeeping is also pertinent. So if you could read those two, that would be great.
I've never been accused of being technical, technologically capable and I've seemed to have lost my ability to read those, but I think I can remember what I wrote.
Okay.
The, uh, um, as to the soil... As to the soils. We found the first year that we, we had actually helped out the the Wallingfords. That owned the uh, fruit house had had some financial troubles. In eighty-four and eighty-five. So we went down and actually grew their crop farm for a couple of years. And it was muddy, but not totally worse than some of our other farms. And once we bought the West Breeze operation, which became Apple Ridge. I had three tractors stuck down there all fall. And this area is one of the worst areas. And what we found is. That it's really nice looking loam, but it's got, you want sandy loam for agriculture. It drains water. It's easier to get nutrients through it. This is a clay loam and it just holds on to water and it gets really slimy when it's wet. And uh, it's been trials and tribulation every spring there. And where the water doesn't penetrate it well. When it gets dry, it turns like a brick clay. And which doesn't. Work well for agriculture. Um, I think that the Wallingfords that that Bancroft and Otto did it were wise in. Converting it to apples because it was the best use for that soil. Unfortunately. In the early two thousands, eighty percent of the wholesale apple. Production in New England went out of business. Because we just don't produce, we don't get the production per acre to compete on the world. Market anymore. And we're going through another shrinkage in the last four or five years with what few of us are left. And where those trees we pulled out. Four or five years ago because we were just losing money on them. We haven't replanted them because we hadn't figured out what we could do. We've kept the. The better soils and and some of the younger trees and obviously. Obvious to mo- to us in agriculture, the Honeycrisp blocks because that's. Those are the ones that are paying bills for us right now. And uh. I haven't, I had one of my good friends, the Chipmunks come and and look at it. They wanted to move their strawberry operation and they. They said they absolutely couldn't work in that soil. The uh, um, they actually run the greenhouse that I have there now, the. High tunnel, I guess you would call it. We we actually pushed that up. And once I talked to a bunch of the the agricultural experts. They said that we really needed to hill a soil like that. So we we bulldozed up. So it's fully three feet above the surrounding soil underneath that. It's a fairly large high tunnel. And. When I used it, I had put, I had put sweet cherry trees in there and I had my um. Oh, my brain is losing me. Anyhow. I had my spike in there that measures the water in the soil. And it works on a vacuum and the name eludes me. And but anyhow. It didn't call for any irrigation. Until halfway through the summer. And mind you, this is like a quarter acre. Undercover with plastic that doesn't get any rain. But that soil, it just, it kept pulling the water from underneath it and there was so much there that that it uh, um, that it. Didn't need irrigation until we got into July, but once it needs it, it really needs it and uh. It's it's been a challenge, but it's it's not prime soils. From what I studied, I studied. I have an agricultural degree. There's nothing about it that's prime soils, but. Um, there's a lot of places you can grow apples that aren't primed, primed soils, but I've found this to be particularly difficult. Sorry if that was a long answer. Farmers get passionate.
Now, thank you. I appreciate it very much. It's very helpful. Um. Also, if you could speak to the um, maintenance of the facility, I think that would be, or at least the maintenance of the grounds.
Yeah, I was. I met a farmer from Somerset in the south of England. Um, several years ago when we were studying before we got into the hard side of business. And this farmer. Seemed to be doing really well. And then he told me that he bought all new tractors every three years. I said. My newest tractor is is a two thousand ten and most of them were built in the eighties. And he said, well, I have a solar farm. And. It turns out that solar farms use narrow orchard tractors and under tree mowing equipment, the same as what we do. And they like, this was the first farm they'd done there with him. And when they developed all the other ones, they hired him to take care of those. With his equipment and his crew. And. He described it to me as being very transferable, that his good people that operated in his orchard. Were also awesome at working underneath solar panels. And I remember that in the back of my mind and then. Seven or eight years later, the opportunity for this happened and so. My my middle son, who unfortunately wasn't a fan of agriculture from the time he was about six. Is a is a lawyer, business lawyer, and he's done a lot with these different solar sites for other people. Along with us and and I had him make sure that he had it written into all of our contracts. That we have, you know, why is it gonna pay us a fair market to do it? We. We have the ability and a way to keep our employees. Excuse me. We feel strongly. About keeping our good employees. And this is a good way that we have found to do that.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so that's very helpful. At this point, I think we still are open. In the public hearing section, um. I've seen no other members of the public who are interested in speaking, so I'll entertain a motion to close.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? This closes the public hearing. Uh, or the public comment section of this public hearing, um. I'd like to open up to the board for discussion.
Yeah, I I guess uh, Megan, were you able to find that prime soils map? If not, that's fine. I mean, it it really is not very good soil up here. Uh, most of it's rocky, I think. Probably the orchards got some of the. Maybe. The the orchard, I'm sure, is still rocky, but it's been warped so long that I'm sure it's not as rocky as, say, my property, but um. Yeah, there's springs all over the place. It's wet, it's clay. I can't, I can't imagine it would have been marked as prime soils for. For agriculture, but. So y- you've got uh, prime farmland and farmland of statewide importance. And if I remember correctly, we said that our. Our prime soils was where that was the farmland of statewide importance because that was the uh, indicator that. Represented um. Reasonable soils for farming. Uh, am I correct in that, Megan?
Um, so I was in here for the discussion of how it was defined. What I went by was the soil study that they provided. Which identified the different types of soils on the lot and it had said that they were prime soils.
Yeah, we we have this state level mapping as well, that's certainly not a survey. I would trust an on the ground survey more so for defining the boundaries. Um, but it does show that there are areas of prime soils up there. But it sounds like on the ground, they're not as well drained as as very good prime soils. Um, and this is a statewide mapping exercise from the seventies too. It's not uh, an exact science for using for boundaries.
Yeah, okay.
There's a lot of interpolation in the creation of these maps.
Yeah, and honestly, I can't imagine having an apple orchard. Is gonna improve those soils. No, no offense to any apple farmers, but. Uh, those of us with wells aren't big fans. Of orchards, so I can't imagine, you know, it's prime for 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 uh, vegetable crops and such, so. Um, but even looking, so thank you for bringing this up. If I look at this and I look at the overlay of the project. It does appear that um. On that site, they really, I mean. I suppose that they could have. I mean, it could move slightly, but th- they. They really have not sort of. Pushed it. As far into the prime soils as they could. They really sort of have pushed it to the back of the property away from the the soils that are identified here, although. Hearing what Mr. Cousins said makes me wonder whether these soils are really prime at all, but if I remember, if I remember our discussion. It was the 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 soils of statewide significance that we had discussed as prime and none of this project sits on any on the. On the that darker green soils area, so.
Yeah, so my recollection of the the is that we considered both uh, Mr. Seer, but um. Yeah. We'd have to go back, I'd have to go back to the um, minutes to actually know that. Other comments from the board? So I guess in uh, for for me, the one issue that I wanted to return to, um. At least is that the issue with the fire department. And the need to. Uh, grant a waiver for the width of the road as could this, as this is currently proposed. I'm still unclear as to whether or not uh, one has been asked for, one has been requested.
It hasn't. We haven't received a formal request.
Can that be in a in a condition of acceptance? For the waiver to be uh, received?
Um, so the planning board should grant it at the meeting. Um, so.
Okay.
You have, we can promote them and have them requested. It sounded like they were open to it.
Uh, I believe the applicant did say, uh, did say that he was requesting, that he did wish to request a waiver if one was required. Um, and honestly, y- you know, I. With all my institutional memory, I can't. Remember. What the requirements are for asking for a waiver, so I don't know if that meets muster or what, but.
Yeah, yeah, so I see in the chat, um, let me just read it into the record. He's confirming what uh, Mr. Seer was just saying. Um, that a request for a waiver would be appropriate here. Um, I guess my question mirrors that of of miss, that Mr. Seer inferred, which is. Is it possible for us to to grant a waiver based on a verbal request during a hearing?
I'm just trying to pull up the language in the ordinance to see if it specifies as a written waiver request or.
Yeah, is there a formal process for that? Is there paperwork that is, that exists? Uh, I'm not even sure what a waiver would entail.
We definitely don't have any paperwork. Um, we just usually get an email or it's in the. The materials that we receive.
I think where we can hold an applicate, an applicant um, to something that they promised verbally at the meeting, we can accept. Uh, a verbal request. We don't usually, we try to have that ahead of time. And is i- is this a request to waive the NFPA standard that the fire departments is re- is referencing?
Well, so yes, so it it would be a waiver for the width of the road and. That you bring, you touch on another issue there, Mr. Cousins, which is that we have actually not heard from the fire department on this. Um.
And if it is an NF. So, sorry, if it is an NFPA standard outside of our zoning ordinance, we may not have the authority to. I mean, you could be open to it, but the fire department may have the ultimate um, authority to make that decision if it's an NFPA standard.
Right, so it's. It seems to me like we. Need, we have a deficit. We need to hear from the fire department and we need to understand whether or not. Um, this is something that we can actually. Uh, waive, right?
Yeah, I think the furthest you could go is to say that um. If the fire department is able to waive it, then you would be open to it, but you couldn't mandate it on them.
So then it, the question I would refer to the board in that case. Would be, is the board comfortable? Making a condition. That is un- as uncertain as that would be.
I am, I I think. You know, this this went to the fire department. They had their chance. I I think that they should have brought this up. When they got a chance to look at this and and for it to come to us without them weighing in on it, seems inappropriate to me.
Other members of the board?
Yeah, I I sort of echo Mr. Staple's sentiment. I think their lack of oversight sort of puts us in a bind. Um, as Mr. Cousins points out, you know, we could certainly try to craft a a waiver. Uh, but as Mr. Duvall points out, you know, it's gonna be sort of shaky at best and we we have to decide. How comfortable we are with that. Um, also, I was just trying to look through, um. In granting a waiver, there there are findings for granting the waiver, so uh, as part of this discussion, we should also make ourselves aware of. What those findings are, um, and that might uh, help the board decide whether or not they feel comfortable moving forward with. A waiver right now that might come into conflict with. Um, something else. Uh, I, you know, I I understand that the fire department didn't weigh in on it, but the. They're gonna, like, they're gonna have no choice but to meet that requirement, whether the. Fire department saw it now or has to go back and look later, right, so.
Did I hear the applicant say that they they just had talked to the fire department, didn't have any problem with the radiuses, but hadn't discussed the width of the road? Is that correct there?
Um, that's my recollection, but. So, um. For me, I understand the issue of, you know, the the fire department, as Mr. Seer has said, has kind of put us in a bit of a bind. Because we have received. No comment. Um. This has, this this sort of thing comes up frequently for us. It's not always a problem. But the things coming to us without hearing from. In this case, a critical part, a critical arm of the city is definitely a frustration. And gives me some some pause in essence. I mean, so as I see it, we have. Two ways forward. We could use. Figure out some language and craft a waiver now, or we could table this and. Table this to our next meeting and in the meantime, hear from the fire department. And as Mr. Seer suggests, look at the findings um, related to any such waiver. I don't know what the board thinks of that, but.
Could we grant a waiver pending? A discussion with the fire department?
We, we could, but that's sort of. I mean, it sort of subverts the the purpose of the planning board granting the waiver, right?
Yeah, it's like kicking the can down the road, right? I mean, but they kicked it to us, so let's kick it back.
Well, I just found the language that describes it, uh, and I, because I couldn't remember it exactly off the top of my head. And the the way it's described is really such that, um. Well, I'll read this right here. Where where the planning board finds that due to special circumstances of a particular plan, provisions. Of certain required improvements are not requisite in the interest of public health, safety and welfare or inappropriate because. Are not requisite in the interest of public health, safety and welfare, or inappropriate because of inadequacy of lack of connecting fills. Facilities adjacent or in proximity to the proposed, uh, this is subdivision, it may waive such requirements. Oh, I might be under subdivision, um, so maybe I didn't find the right spot. Um.
I think the language is that you can grant a waiver if it's necessary to meet the objective and intent of site plan review.
Right, yeah, I'm trying to find it, because that's what I'm saying, if I remember correctly, it's it's it's, yeah, it's something to, it's basically to the effect of. By granting the waiver, we're meeting the intent and we're granting the waiver because. Uh, conditions of the site plan uh prevent full compliance with. The ordinance. Um, but by not requiring full compliance, we're not. Subverting sort of the the language of the ordinance or or. The site plan review itself. If that makes sense.
It's um, so it's under section sixty dash eight oh six. Um, and it requires that um, the applicant or the planning board make a finding that the objectives of the access management have been satisfied.
Well, if that's the case, I mean, a fire truck is. Nine feet wide. They they've. Satisfied that as far as I'm concerned.
And back and back to the point of intent, isn't the the. One of the reasons they're not widening the road to minimize the topsoil disturbance? So wouldn't that kind of be along the intent of the? Or one of the reason that they're not widening it?
Right.
I mean, I guess it would, but at that point, we'd say we shouldn't have the twenty foot wide requirement for any solar farm, right, because. Doing any road. Sort of.
And we still don't.
Kind of agree with that. Sorry, Mr. Dubal.
Well, we still don't know if this is um. An NFPA requirement.
Well. He cites a section of the NFPA, obviously, I don't know. I really don't know much about it, um, but. He cites a section of it and it says, fire department access roads shall have an unobstructed width of not less than twenty feet.
And and for typical developments, that twenty foot width and the turnaround has to go within a hundred and fifty feet of any point that they need access to. Um. I don't know if that helps in this case or not. Megan, was fire not represented at the development review meeting this month?
Um, I believe he was there.
Okay. I'm just wondering where the breakdown was where he didn't get us any. Any feedback on that. Um, the city manager has made it clear that every department is required to be represented at those meetings so that this doesn't. Happen, um, but it sounds like he was there and maybe just didn't provide follow up comments.
Yeah, so um. Personally, I feel uneasy. And like we do not have the information that we need. Uh. On this particular item. Um. But I'm only one voice.
Well, I'll weigh in and I I might, I might be unpopular right now, but um. So. Um, A, I I agree with Mr. Dubal that um. I don't want to grant a waiver. Um, that is in conflict with. Uh, nationally required standards. Um. Unless that waiver is, and it sounds like the fire department can create a waiver. Um, unless the fire department had previously created such a waiver. Um. Additionally, and this is what's gonna maybe make me not so popular is, it's a dirt access road. And so it's not like a fourteen foot wide road that was built to city standard that's gonna require. A complete rebuild. To put out to twenty feet. And so I have a hard time. In my mind, saying that this creates some sort of hardship or that the site itself sort of precludes the. Widening of the road an extra six feet or three feet on either side. Um, when the planning board grants waivers, we generally do so because the standards cannot be. Met feasibly. And I'm not sure that. Um. That's the case here, given that it's. Already a dirt access road. Um, it's not widening an asphalt road. Um, so.
If I may, um, I pulled up my notes from the plan review meeting where the fire department was present and. They had mentioned the vegetative management plan and so no vines or other surface um can grow up. Um, and then they had asked for a ten foot clearance around the perimeter of the site, so in the staff report. The items that we cited from NFPA. Were items that was provided for previous solar projects. Um, so without getting specific comments from them, we dragged those over. I assume they're still relevant, um, because we just reviewed them a few months ago, um, but he didn't specifically say. The road has to be twenty feet, he just cited NFPA. That helps.
So he cited that he the NFPA standards need to be met?
For a previous solar project, not for this one.
Okay. Well, this is one of those situations where he, someone's gonna have to feel really uncomfortable going to someone and saying they didn't do their job. Unfortunately. And I know that sounds harsh to say it that way, but. We've been put in a bind here. Uh, in such a bind that. I tend to agree with Mr. Dubal that it might be bust a table. When you've got two out of five members feeling that way. Um, it's difficult to move forward, quite frankly, I. I'll, I'm gonna put this one squarely on, uh. Whoever the staff was from from fire for not. Um, making a comment on this and um. I know this sounds harsh, but um. It it it's a prime example of why. We have these meetings. Uh, before the planning board reviews things. Um, and I I think planning board staff has done a great job. Making sure we understand what's going on, I just think that we were really let down. By the fire department on this one, unfortunately, and I I'm sure they're incredibly busy right now, and this is not something they're used to, we've only had a few of these come through. Um, but. Uh, I don't know, this one's. This is, that's a big oversight.
Are we, are you guys able to see what Mr. Albright sang in the uh chat?
I I am, uh, I would hesitate to not. So unfortunately, so chat probably ought to be shut off for these meetings because we're not supposed to entertain any information that's not part of public record, so. Um. If 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 we do want to look at the chat and enter that. Information as part of our decision making. Um. We ought to have staff or the chair go ahead and read those comments on the public record if we're gonna use them to make any sort of decision.
I think that last comment he said might be pertinent if someone were to read it into public record. Is that? Done or is it?
Um, I'd like to hear from other, however, other members of the board feel about that before I read any.
I'm fine with it.
Mr. Finnegan?
Uh, yeah, so if the question is. Do we put that out on the public record? Yeah, I I'm fine with that as well.
Mr. Seer?
Yeah, I I absolutely agree, I don't think the chat was being used for any sort of suburban, subversive purpose, I think it's. An artifact of. Twenty twenty and having to do these 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 Zoom meetings, right? Not everyone is aware of what what can be used and where it can be used, so. I think it would be. Not only appropriate, I think it would be. Probably best to to share what uh is being said.
Absolutely, thank you, so um, the pertinent comment from Mr. Albright. Um, the representative from Borrego Solar is that uh is, and I'll quote, we would accept a condition that the road be increased to twenty feet throughout. Then it should be a moot point, end quote. So given that information, how does the um? Does that change how the board is thinking about this issue?
Absolutely, because if the standards that we impose are at least as stringent. As the NFPA standards, then I'm not worried about what the fire department has to say um on that, because. As Mr. Albright pointed out, it'd be a moot point.
I concur. Any more thoughts about the road?
You know, I just wanna say thanks for reading that because I don't see that comment anywhere.
Um.
Uh, sorry, which comment was that about the NFPA?
The one I just read from Mr. Albright. Mr. Staples is unable to see it for some reason, but I I don't think we need to, since I read it, I don't think we need to um.
Yeah, let's not worry about it, but thank you.
All right, so any more uh discussion? Issues that people? On the board? Have? So hearing none. Um, to proceed, we would need a motion.
I would like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion uh that we approve the site plan special exception. By Borrego Solar to construct an eighteen point nine acre, four point nine nine five megawatt solar array. At ten forty Perkins Ridge Road, parcel ID number two nine five dash zero zero four on a parcel split between the agriculture and resource protection. And low density country residential zoning districts. Um. With the following conditions, that all bonding and inspection fees shall be paid. And a notice to proceed issued by the engineering department before the start of construction. An addressing plan shall be provided for the area of the property that will be used for the solar project, no herbicides, pesticides. And insecticides shall be used as part of the project. That the road uh way throughout the project be increased to a width of twenty feet. And there was one, there's one more that the staff. Had discussed, I believe, um.
Ten foot. Clearance around that. Was it, is that, was that what it was, Megan?
Um, it was the O and M plan.
Uh. And that a a uh O and M plan uh. Be uh. Submitted uh for staff uh review and approval prior to the. Uh. Construction of the project. Did I hit everything, Megan, that you guys were looking for?
Yes. Thank you.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, is there any discussion of the motion? So Megan, can you do me a favor and um? From your plan review notes? Can you just tell me what the fire? Department said?
So he said a vegeta- vegetation management plan, um, so that no vines or other surfaces will grow um. Under the panels and create a fire hazard and a ten foot clearance around the perimeter of the site. And I believe that they have addressed the ten foot clearance already. Um, but I don't know if we received a copy of that revised plan or not, I don't think we have.
Well, so the plan as as provided looks like. It's got at minimum uh from any other vegetative uh surface, which would be at the West River Point. Um. Say, I don't have a scale with me, but looking at another point. Uh, probably around seventy five ish foot. Open area between the solar panel and the any closest trees, so.
They probably met that anyways.
It looks like they met that, and since we're approving a site plan. Um, we're approving where these things are located, so it's it's not like they can move them, you know.
Yep.
Right up to the trees or not.
Yep. Any more discussion of the motion? I'd like to do a roll call vote.
Uh, Mr. Bertrand?
Yes.
Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Mr. Finnegan?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
And Chairman Duval?
Yes. All right, great, thank you, um. Now like to move to. Um. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. On an ordinance amendment to consider proposed amendments to chapter sixty, article nine. Home occupation regulations, section sixty dash seven three eight. Of the ordinances of the city of Auburn to limit the size of medical marijuana caregiver culture cultivation in home occupations. Staff?
Yeah, so this is an ordinance change, um, like you said, to the home occupation standard for marijuana cultivation businesses. Um, the proposed ordinance change is in response to concerns that were raised by a neighborhood related to a marijuana business. Um, or businesses, I should say. At the October fifth city council meeting, staff was instructed to move forward with um some changes, some quick changes that could address some of the concerns and there's others that. Um, may be coming down the pike that may take some additional work. Um, one of the quicker solutions that pertain to zoning, which is under the purview of the planning board. Is to address a twenty five percent home occupation criteria. Um, which allows too much of a single family home or um to be occupied by a home occupation, so for example. If you had a two thousand square foot home, you could have up to five hundred square feet of the home used for home occupation, which seems a little. Outside of the scope of what home occupations are intended for. Um, so we recommend amending the language to say twenty five square feet or five hundred square feet, whichever is less.
You meant twenty five percent, right?
Yeah.
What did I say, twenty five square feet?
Yeah, that'd be a small.
Yes, twenty five percent, oh my gosh.
It's been a long day, don't worry about it.
It has been already, um. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, any questions for staff?
I guess my only question for staff is, if I'm reading this correctly. Uh, this is coming to us from council. And that the um. Proposed language uh has already been valid by council. And that we're a part of this process as a formality because we're required to be a part of this process because it's an amendment to chapter sixty?
Correct, yep, so you're just making a recommendation to city council.
Any other questions for staff? So I have one, do we have um the applicant? Here? I don't think we do.
I don't think there is an applicant.
No, we we don't have a specific applicant on this, what it was was uh we held a meeting in North Auburn, the the normal north and west Auburn neighborhood meeting that happens every few months. Um. We had a nearly eight thousand square foot, single family home. In North Auburn, um, that kind of opened our eyes to this loophole, most people won't. Buy an eight thousand square foot home just to try to start a home occupation, small business from a spare bedroom. Um, but with marijuana, the financial incentive is there to do it. And uh, it wasn't anticipated that it would ever become a two thousand square feet of cultivation as a home occupation in a residence. Um, so they're looking to kind of close that loophole and limit it to five hundred square feet.
Okay, thank you.
And the council, the council took that public feedback and initiated this this change.
Great, thank you. Um, at this time, I'd need a motion to open the public comment.
I'm moved.
Have a second?
Megan?
On favor? Okay, if any members of the public present would like to comment, um, please raise your hand and we will. Bring you. We'll unmute you and allow you to address the board.
We have two members here, um, I don't believe they're here for this proposal though. We have two members here, um I don't believe they're here for this proposal though.
Doesn't appear so. Seeing no raised hands.
Make a motion to close public hearing.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second that.
Night, can I say something real quick?
Yes.
I know that Mr. Staples meant to say. The public input session of the hearing and now the public hearing itself, so. Just for the rec- just for the record, you know, like.
Yeah.
Thank you, I'll accept the friendly amendment.
Uh, all in favor? Thank you. Uh, any discussion from the board, thoughts, comments?
I'll, I'll vote for this, but I still think it's too big an area for a medical marijuana cultivation facility. Where you're only allowed to have five patients. If you're a medical marijuana producer, it seems like overkill, but I'll still vote for it.
I also uh kind of agree with Mr. Staples. It does need, it, it's a loophole, it does need to be shut. But there are people that I, that rent five hundred square foot spaces for this type of thing and that I, that I full on. Uh, grow businesses, not just in-home businesses, so it does seem like it's a significant amount of space, space for a home grow.
Other thoughts, comments?
I do have one question. So we're talking about uh caregivers, um. Can cultivation of recreational uh marijuana be done in a home occupation setting, Eric?
Not cultivation for sale, um cultivation for personal use could be allowed in a home without a permit.
Okay.
Um, but not as a caregiver is cultivating for other people, um other than family members to require this permit. Um, four hundred square feet was also considered. The board could certainly recommend a smaller amount of floor area than five hundred. But it's, there's not a magic number, but five hundred can be, i- is a lot.
So, uh, but Eric, so just to, to make sure, there's no, like. Okay, so I've got a big house, you know, recreational marijuana, um as we move forward, uh works out. A- am I able to get a permit to grow? To cultivate as a uh, a um. Uh, what do I say, as a home occupation?
Not for adult use marijuana, only for uh medical marijuana as a caregiver.
Okay.
Now, if you and I and six buddies in college got a house together, um. Eight of us, we could have twenty-four plants and we wouldn't regulate that as commercial cultivation at all. Uh, it can, it can be abused, but it's not part of this amendment.
Okay, I was just asking, I guess it occurred to me that I, I couldn't remember if that was allowed as a home occupation. I was gonna say we should tack that in there if it is, but if it isn't, then.
No, it's not, not part of the home occupation for personal use, but it is a, a loophole that. Can be exploited if you have a lot of adults that want to cultivate in a single household for their own personal use, not for sale.
Any more comments, thoughts from the board?
Okay, hearing none, I'd need a motion to move forward with this. Alright, hearing none, I'll, I'll get it going. Uh, I make a motion that the planning board make a favorable recommendation to the city council. On the change to the home occupation cu- criteria as it applies to medical marijuana caregiver uh cultivation. Um, to amend at chapter sixty, article nine, home occupation regulations. Section sixty dash seven three eight, criteria number three, to cap the maximum floor area of medical marijuana caregiver cultivation at twenty-five percent. Um, of, of the household or five hundred square feet, whichever is less.
Second, do I have a second?
Second.
We do a roll call vote?
Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Finnegan?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
And Chairman Duval?
Yes. Great, um. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to the next item, item five on the agenda. Is a discussion, and to return to our discussion of. The border areas and form-based code and. Adding a provision in the ordinance to allow the planning board to move parcels between um. Zoning districts along that border. So staff, you want to summarize what we're talking about?
Yeah, so we talked about this last month when we had talked about expanding the form-based code and um. The planning board wanted to think through this process a little bit more and how it would work. And so um we had talked about at the time if a property abutted another zoning district. They could essentially take the standards in that other zoning district and apply them to their property. Um, but it, we think that it would be um a good idea, I guess, to have. Two form-based code zoning districts that abut each other to allow them to have what's called a hundred foot transition zone. So that um we don't have a, a zoning border on, for example, a parcel line. It would instead be a hundred foot border between the two zoning districts where. The properties in that hundred foot transition zone could take either um. Either form-based code provision that they think applies best to their property, um or the city thinks applies best, I should say. Um, so. That's a, a suggestion that we have, so it wouldn't be. Uh, form-based code that abuts a residential zoning district, for example, it would just be between form-based code districts. Um, so if the planning board is in favor of this or wants to discuss it further. Um, we sent out public hearing notices to abutters for the two form-based code. Areas that we have been discussing and we think that most of these people were already notified in that process. But we would want to schedule another public hearing for next month to specifically talk about that transition zone and notify those people that would be in it, so.
Thank you. Any questions for staff on this?
Uh, yeah, so I guess I, I was just trying to conceptualize this hundred foot buffer zone. So if a property in the buffer zone were to switch zones, would the buffer zone? Be taken up or would it move to the next property over?
So the way that, um, and I was hoping that we'd be able to have a map, but um Rosemary is completely swamped with maps. So um we can definitely have one for the next meeting, but the way it would work would, it would. It would essentially look just like the zoning map. There would be a section, a strip in between the two districts. That um it could be hatched or something that, that indicates that it's could be in either zoning district. So any of those provisions would apply, but it would be set in stone, that boundary. So um it's not something where if someone takes advantage of it, then the next parcel can, the next parcel can. It would only be those properties that would be in that strip that would be able to do that. I don't know if that clarifies it a little better.
Yeah, it helps.
Then to actually move the line, they would have to follow the normal process of somebody, the council or the planning board initiating a change. And going through a discussion with the planning board for a recommendation. And the council, just like every other zoning district, it would stay static, but allow flexibility along that boundary. Uh, between two form-based code districts within the form-based code area.
Thank you. Mr. Seer?
So. Uh, first question, hundred foot boundary, so we're talking about a hundred feet from sort of the line of delineation. So it's like two hundred feet wide? Or fifty foot on either side of the, with the current delineation?
So that's something that we'll ta- talk through with the planning board. My thought was fifty feet on either side. Um, and just that hundred foot, but we just kind of decided on a hundred feet would be an, an easy number to start with and then. What the planning board thinks.
So implications of that, um. When we look at allowable uses on split lots, because essentially there would be a lot of lots that would be split for use, right? We generally don't allow or haven't allowed, although sometimes I've seen it. You, you'll have a use that straddles the two, but say like the majority that has to be in one or the other. Um, then wherever the majority is, or sometimes, like if it's the ag zone, for instance, none of the building can be in the ag zone. It's all, if you've got a split lot, it's all gonna be off the ag zone. Um, so I guess my question to staff as we move forward is, is like fifty foot. Enough, right? Could, you know, um.
Or is a, another way to think about this would be to actually draw the line and then. Instead of using a distance buffer, actually use the lot boundaries.
That's what I was gonna recommend to you.
Right, so the bound, the buffer, the buffer becomes the lots that intersect the zoning boundary.
Yeah, that, to me, that would make more sense. It would eliminate an entire set of headaches.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next question. Uh, this, what you guys are talking about right now, uh and it's explicitly written in the staff report is between form-based. Zones. If I remember correctly, last month, we weren't talking about a property in one form-based zone utilizing the code from another form-based zone. We were discussing a property outside of the form-based zone utilizing the uh criteria for an adjacent form-based zone.
Right, and that was my mistake. Um, I misunderstood what the idea was when it was conceptualized. Um, so it is just between form-based codes. It would be very messy to try and do it with other zoning districts, so.
Okay, yeah, I was just wondering what the. Alright, thanks.
Any more um? Questions for staff? Or really even discussion, because this isn't this, this isn't a public hearing, so. I guess the question becomes, is this something that the planning board is interested in holding a public hearing on?
I kind of wonder, does, does creating a zone, uh, a flexible zone like this, does it? In any way enhance the value of a property?
Um, it certainly could, depending on um what the zones are that they're in between, gives them a little bit more flexibility. Um, I know we have the assessor working on coming up with um some valuation for. The other form-based code proposal that we're talking about, um just to see what those changes would be, but that's going from a multi-family to a form-based code district. Um, the form-based code districts themselves don't have a whole lot of variability between them, I guess. I don't know if it has enough that would affect the value substantially, um but it could, certainly.
Yeah, I think whether value really starts to show on a transition like this is what improvements are actually built on the lot. If there's a, you know, a three-story maximum in one district and a five-story maximum in the other. And they build five stories, the improver, improvements really affect the value. And don't really affect the person who didn't take advantage of the flexibility.
Other thoughts on this one? Yep, Mr. Seer?
It, it's, it's a novel idea and as I think. Happen there.
Happen there.
Zoom.
Zoom.
Okay, I'm gonna try again.
I'm gonna try again.
Nope, okay. I think that it's, it's a novel idea and it strikes me that it would have solved a lot of, or it would have. Uh, reduced a lot of strife that I've seen in my tenure over uh the years on the board. Whenever a project comes in that's on the border between two zones, um I can think most recently about the. Uh, rehabilitation project uh for the nursing home on Summer Street that straddles Summer and Turner. And how the neighbors were quite upset because it didn't fit with their side of the road. Um, but it didn't matter if it fit on their side of the road, it was a different zone. The zone ran down the center of that road, right? Um, so I, I would love to see how staff plays this out. And uh to put my own two cents in, I would much prefer uh the, what, what Mr. Duval said. And saying that if we're gonna have a transition zone, draw it out so that um. The parcels adjacent to those boundaries themselves represent the transition zone, so the transition zone is not. A buffer of a set width, but a buffer that conforms to the adjacent zones, um. I think it sounds interesting. To me, it sort of sounds like you, you're talking about one lot. What is one lot different? Oftentimes when we make these lines, or I've seen it come back where we've made these lines, and then you look and you say, oh, well, that line was. What would be the problem if we had pushed that line over one more? One more lot, it probably wouldn't have made a big difference, but it could make a big difference to uh the, the owner, so. Uh, I'm for it, but I, I like Mr. Duval's idea.
So just to be clear, Mr. Seer, you would be for holding a public hearing on this?
Yeah, absolutely. I, 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 I see some pitfalls. Um, but I think it's not worth sort of like really getting into the nitty gritty unless we're having a public hearing. I'd like to hear what the public has to say, but I also see great merit in, in the concept. Um, and if it works here, I, I, I almost think it's the sort of thing that could sort of be globalized out beyond the um form-based, but yes, I'd like to move forward.
I agree, thank you. Um, does anyone on the board disagree with that? Okay, so staff, I think uh we should go ahead and schedule that public hearing.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you. Alright, we come to item six. Megan, did you have thoughts on this one?
Um, yeah, so this is the, the phase two of the form-based code um. Amendments that we had discussed to replace the multi-family urban district and in the new Auburn neighborhood. Um, so we had sent out about six hundred notices. And I see that we only have one attendee here. Um, I know Eric and I have been fielding a number of questions, uh mostly just people trying to understand what this proposal is. Um, but I'm just a little surprised that we only have one attendee. And so I would just, I would recommend to the planning board that it be tabled if. The planning board's amendable to that, just so that we can make sure that we notify the public one more time where it is, you know, a change to their zoning. And we did receive all those inquiries and it just makes me nervous that we only have one attendee here.
Did staff let those, uh, those people that reached out to you, did you let them know that this would be on, uh, that this would be a virtual meeting and how to attend the meeting?
We did, so in the legal notice that we sent out and the abutters letter, we had sent out um a link to the meeting. My mistake, I didn't put the link on the agenda, um so it, it may not have been accessible to everyone. That was my mistake, but um it was in the legal notice and the butter letter.
I think legally we're covered with what was done, but I do think there was, there was a lot of people, New Auburn always. Comes out with questions about change in their neighborhoods because they care about their neighborhood. Um, it's probably worth listening to, um, any comments that June Valencourt has. Um, she's the one member of the public here, but I think it would be safer to hold another public hea- public hearing next month.
Okay, so given that, I would suggest that um I go. Given that, I would suggest that um I go ahead and open this and we hear from the public. And then if the board is interested, we can table at that point during the discussion. Does that sound correct? Mr. Seer, I see you're unmuted.
Uh, I I just forgot to mute myself again, yeah. I'm I'm waiting to make the motion. I'll make I'll make a motion to open the public uh. The public input section of the hearing.
Are you doing that now? Let me introduce it and then you can do that.
Oh, all right.
Um, so we come to the ordinance amendment, public hearing on the proposed expansion of the form based code zoning.
Oh, yeah, it is public hearing, sorry.
Yep, T dash four point two, traditional downtown neighborhood to replace the current. Zoning in the multifamily urban district in the new Auburn neighborhood consisting of the streets from Riverside Drive to Ninth Street and portions. Broad and South Main Street pursuant to chapter sixty. Article seventeen amendments of the city. Of of the city of Auburn ordinances. So we've heard a little from staff. Do we go ahead and hear the rest of the staff report?
Um.
I mean, we we went over this last time. We kind of know what this is.
Right. Yeah, um, the planning board had some questions at the last meeting about what would trigger the form based code standards. Um, and some protections for existing structures. I can go through those now if you'd like, or. Um, we can do it at the next meeting when maybe more of the public is here. Or we can do it at both.
Any thoughts from board on that? I'm happy to postpone it. If we're gonna table this, but we have to table it.
I I would like to table, but I think I would like to hear from um this this Valencourt.
Yep. So at this point, um, if the board is amendable, I'd like a motion to open the public comment.
So moved.
Second.
On favor? At this time, I'd like to um, will you bring Mrs. Mrs. Valencourt in? And you can unmute yourself and state your name and address and address the board, please.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry, I got disconnected for a minute. Uh, my name is June Valencourt and I'm third generation in New Auburn. And I think uh in talking to my neighbors, the letter brought up a, I guess, a lot of questions. So it was sort of a general notification, but people didn't really understand. What it was all about, why they were being notified. Um, what? Considerations they had to be concerned about co- conversations about eminent domain. You know, are we talking about a large developer coming in, throwing us out of our homes? So there was a lot of discussion going on in the neighborhood. Regarding what it really all meant. And then in the past, form based code, where we're talking about. Constricting as far as grass growth, painting, that kind of thing. Um, uh, you know, brought up confusion with that that was discussed way in the past. So I guess the letter created a lot of more questions. Then it sort of informed people. With regard to what this was all about, and a lot of people just threw up their hands and said, well, we'll never get an answer. So I think that's why I'm here is I'm trying to get. What is this all about? You know, are we talking about a large development that's coming into New Auburn? Or we are just talking about the physicality of what's going on in New Auburn? Or are we bringing back that obnoxious New Auburn phase plan that they were? Thinking about years ago. So I think, you know, that's where I'm coming from is it's just exactly what is this all about?
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Um. Seeing no further members of the public, we need a motion to close. The public comment section.
Make a motion to close the public comment section.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor? So um. I think it's important that uh we note all the questions that. The member of the public has brought forward to us and um. We need to do uh have a good faith effort actually to answer a bunch of those questions. Um, I don't know if staff is prepared to do that now, or whether. That would be an amendment to a staff report. For a discussion at a future future date. Um, Megan, what do you think?
Yeah, so um, the notice that they received is actually the blurb that's on your planning board agenda. Um, and then it referred them to the website for the staff report and supporting documents. I think the staff report um did a good job explaining what the standards are currently in their area and what the proposed standards are. And we we also went through um what would trigger the form based code. So we're certainly, there's no developers um involved. It's it's just a zoning change. Um, but it does change what they can do with their property. Um, and it does allow them some more flexibility, but I think it would be helpful to kind of. Write all of that out and maybe lay out a couple of examples of properties in that area. And provide them, you know, mail out the staff report to them if we can do that. Um, and just make sure they have those tables so they really understand what this is. I would hate to have the planning board approve something when the neighborhood um maybe doesn't entirely understand what's going on.
All right, all right. So I tend to agree, and Mr. Seer, I see that you have something you want to say. Um, I just wanted to comment that um I think it would be really useful. To the extent possible that staff also outline. The motivations for this change, like what what are the sort of global scale motivations rather than the impacts? Um, because I think I heard that question. Uh, from the member of the public. So, Mr. Seer?
Yeah, I think one of the things that will help people understand. Um, what's gonna happen is to. Outline what the current zones are. So for instance, um, previous to my current residence, I lived on Broad Street. Um, and I actually lived on Broad Street right at the bottom of uh. Across the street from the bottom of Miriam Drive and um. Our side of the street was actually uh. Multi-family urban or something like that. And, you know, it turns out like my third of an acre lot, I could have put like. Like an like an eight unit. Uh, apartment building is still been within the the density requirements, right? So it was sort of like an odd. Was like an odd mix in the neighborhood. Um, and I grew up in New Auburn, so there is a lot of mixed housing there, but it's also the sort of thing where like. The people that have residential homes want their homes to be residential homes, right? And the people that live in apartments like the want to live in their apartment, they don't want the two, it's not like they want. Um, to them, you know, to be the other. Um, so I think. It's good that staff. Showed the proposed change area. But maybe include in the documentation that's available to the public. The current zoning along with. What the difference in the density and the uses are so that people can really see what do they have now? And what would it change to?
Great, thank you. Mr. Staples, did you have something you wanted to say?
Um, Mr. Seer pretty much covered it with with kind of giving. A little bit of an illustration of. Where we are and where we're going. I think that. That makes a lot of sense to add um. As well as maybe a little bit more of an explanation about, you know, what what triggered this in the first place, you know, to clean up zoning. But why, you know, that kind of thing, just just to give a little bit more uh background, but. Yeah, I think Mr. Seer covered most of it.
Thank you. Any other thoughts on the board? Seeing none, I need a motion um. Regarding an action on this. Item.
Make a motion to table this to a date certain, our January meeting um. Pending. Further. Notification of residents of the zoning change.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Okay, any, any discussion of the motion on the table?
Yeah, um. I think it's highly irregular that we would do this. I under- I understand why it's about to happen. Um. But at the same time, in the past, I I never remember a meeting where we said. That not enough people were angry enough to come out and talk that we would. Um. Table something. Uh, I grew up in New Auburn. I lived in New Auburn after I got married. Uh, just recent, I've. Only not lived in in New Auburn within the last, say, uh, five to six years. Um, New Auburn is full of passionate residents. Uh, I was one of them, but at the same time, I guess as a planning board member. Um, if you were provided with the opportunity to come speak to us, you were provided with the opportunity to come speak to us, so. That's my piece. I understand that what's, I understand what's going to happen, but I just would like to say, I think it's. Sort of, sort of odd. I've never seen this, so.
Uh, Mr. Seer, if I, uh, Mr. Chair, if I could just explain a little bit.
Yep.
Um, Evan, we we realized um just recently tonight that the. Public notice and the staff report and agenda for this item didn't have the active link in it for the Zoom meeting. And we've been checking our emails to see if there's any been anybody asking about that. Um, but we're very surprised. It's not easy to access the the meeting for this item. Uh, without the active link, you'd have to actually type in the, you know, twenty um. Twenty digit or twenty um letter Zoom link that was in your mailed notice, and it's difficult to do that. So we're thinking that some people may have had trouble accessing the meeting.
I I'll say I have no problem tabling a meeting if we think that it was on us. Um, we notified people, but we didn't provide them with ample opportunity to uh. Be able to attend a meeting. That I have no issue with. I guess I sort of took issue with the idea that. We thought there would be more people here than there were, so we're gonna table it because of that, but.
We're we're concerned that they tried and weren't able to.
Okay.
Yeah, based on that, um. I concur. If if we feel like we didn't communicate well, then I think it's in our best interest. So if there's not any more discussion, um, I'd like to ask for a roll call vote.
Um, Mr. Bergeron?
Yes.
Mr. Seer?
Yes.
Mr. Finnegan?
Yes.
Mr. Staples?
Yes.
And Chairman Duvall?
Yes. All right, we're getting there. Um. At this point, we'll move on to item number seven on the agenda. Uh, which is a review and discussion of the planning board policies and procedures. Um, there are. If I can see three items on this, the first being Robert's Rules of Order, which is essentially. Some. Uh, rules on how we conduct our business, the second being attendance policy. And the third being findings. So um, staff, you want to start with item A?
Yeah, so we tried to see if we could get an MMA attorney to attend the planning board meeting who teaches the classes and has. You know, that experience with how boards should conduct the meetings. Um, we weren't able to get them, but we did speak to our city attorney briefly. And um, he had said that you really shouldn't reference Robert's Rules of Order, and this is the third attorney that has said this to us. Um, unless you really, really know the ins and outs of Robert's Rules of Order. Um, so unfortunately, he didn't have a recommendation for an alternative to Robert's Rules of Order. He said to look at some good um model ordinances and um just kind of lay out. Um, or go from there and see what examples we have um that we can pull from. I did get Portland's and I believe I got Gorum's, which is what MMA references. Um, and Erica brought up a good point. Uh, it takes a lot of work, but for the zoning board of appeals. Um, he actually lays out the process for how they go about making their motions and their decisions, so it gets very detailed. Um, and we can talk about maybe doing that as part of the staff reports, if that's something the planning board would like to see.
My preference would not be that staff takes the time to do that each time. If we're gonna be using the same process each time, I would just soon codify that in our. Policies and procedures. Um, staff already spends quite a bit of time uh developing our materials, and I know that you guys are busy, so. Um, I think if we have it written down once, that that's good.
I certainly agree with that.
I think that could work well for planning board. Do we, the reason we did that for Board of Appeals is because they sometimes go a year or more without meeting. And it's been helpful for the chair who who doesn't get the experience that a planning board chair gets.
Eric, is it possible for us to actually see? One of those, I mean, I I I know we can go probably on the city site and grab one, but uh. Have one of those presented in in a meeting here so we can see what that looks like, like what you write down and what process they follow?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. It's be- it's basically a meeting script that I. Personally think borderline so I'm kind of guiding the board more than we should in decision making. Um, but it's it's worked for a chair who doesn't get to chair as many meetings as the planning board chair does. And we can make a recommendation on a model um for a decision making policy.
Yeah, I think if we could see the language specifically on how. Motions are made. Um. Because we already have descriptions of what our hearings will be and the. How they've, like what form they'll follow. So if we just have, I outlined like a. The some some structure for how. How how we make decisions, which decisions require. Uh, a motion, formal motion, how the motions are made, things like that. I think that would be enough for us. We don't usually get too far into the weeds.
I agree. I I think it would be useful to see both Portland and Gorum's. Rules as well. Anyone else have thoughts on this? Okay, the next item is uh attendance policy. Um. I don't know. I've only, I've not been, let's see, I'm in second, I'm the have the second longest tenure of the people who. Are here, um, so I might need to rely on uh Eric and Mr. Seer here. About what typical attendance is like on the planning board. Um. But it seems to me that an attendance policy, one, because we have, I think, three different policies floating around that we ought to. You know, land on one that we actually. All agree on, and then two, we ought to consider what is appropriate for the planning board. So, Mr. Seer, I don't know whether um. In your tenure. Ha- is it normal to have multiple absences per meeting, or does it just vary from? Time of year to time of year?
Um, it has varied, however, um, I could tell you until as of late. Um, sort of at the end of my second term as chair, uh, previous to that. Um, and Eric, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't recall there being regular regular absences on the board. Um, sort of ongoing, it it was not necessary, it was common to have everyone. Uh. It was not necessarily uncommon to be missing one or two people, but certainly not each meeting.
Yeah, I think that's that's consistent with what I recall as well, and quite often when somebody starts. Feeling like they have to be absent, they'll choose to resign.
And then you would have an absence based on a vacancy rather than an absence.
Right.
Yep.
Uh, uh, to to further the discussion, I will say um. Obviously, I'm not privy to this anymore because I'm not chair, um. Obviously, I'm not privy to this anymore because I'm not chair, in the past. I don't ever recall knowing that someone wasn't going to be there ahead of time, at least. Prior to the meeting, there were a few times where it came in kind of late during the day, sort of like. I've gotta work late tonight or something, but prior, there, I don't really recall a meeting where I didn't know. Who was going to be absent prior to, prior to that six o'clock start date. And I'm not sure that that's necessarily the case now, though.
Yeah, it was certainly the anomaly if it did happen.
Yep.
And that has become more regular lately. So given all of that, is there? The wording in our, what is the? The wording in our policies and procedures is. This is in our policies and procedures now. Attendance at all planning board meetings, public hearings and workshops shall not drop below fifty percent within a twelve month period. And then what can happen after you do that? In an explanation that is dated January twenty fourteen, that is on the Auburn website at the moment. There's a responsibility of members which reads. To attend meetings regularly or notify the chairman or city planner in advance of absence. Parenthetically, two consecutive meetings missed which are unexcused may result in loss of appointment. So certainly, I think that. That as chairperson, I think it's in the best interest of the board to. Set some expectations that are a little higher than we currently have in our rules and procedures. Because we. Are, at, at times get close to not having enough to be quorum, for example. If we had had one more absence and Mr. Staples had decided to recuse himself on that issue this evening, we would not have had quorum, would not have been able to proceed. So. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks about that, but that's what, that's how I'm thinking at this moment.
Yeah, I think, I, I kind of have a problem with allowing excused absences. In, in a different manner than a unexcused absence, I figure. If, if you allow an excused absence, then I could email you every single month and say, look, I can't make it. And then I would still be a member of the board and I'm not doing anything and I'm not contributing, so. Excused absences to me are kind of wishy washy, I don't like them very much. That said, I don't know what the threshold should be as far as how many absences you're allowed before there's. Consequences, I, I don't know. Fifty percent seems awfully generous, two seems like it could possibly happen to. A pretty, you know, good board member, so I, maybe somewhere between, but I don't know what that number is for, I don't know.
Thoughts from other members?
I agree with the, the excuse, the. Discussion of the excused absence thing, because we were talking earlier with what the definition of excused is, and I don't think that should be a. Determination we have to make. But I also agree that fifty percent in a twelve month period seems like it's very generous at that point, I don't know how you'd be very. In touch with what the board was up to, if you haven't done to. Six months where it's the planning board meetings.
Thank you. Other comments, thoughts?
Oh, sorry, I was gonna say, I, I would agree with the sentiment from Mr. Bergeron and Mr. Staples, and maybe cutting it in half to twenty five percent. Might be a good way to start.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Seer?
Yeah, I, I mean. I guess. Yeah, fifty percent, and I don't, I don't particularly have an issue with it, but I, I certainly can see the argument that it, it seems incredibly lenient. I think that my thoughts right now are less on the, the cutoff and more about. Specific criteria. So as Mr. Staples stated, he was in favor of saying, you know, an absence is an absence regardless. And there's merit to that, right, because you're, you're supposed to be here to be able, the, the reason we're here is so that the municipality can conduct business and. You know, if, if you can't be here to be able to do that, that's, that's okay, no one's gonna begrudge you, but perhaps it's best if someone else is here to be able to do the job, right? So I can see that argument. So, I, I don't, I don't have strong feelings, if, if the majority of folks want to move it to say twenty five percent to split the difference, that's, that's fine with me. I think that we should have clear language that states that, however, I do think we should have clear. I, I have no problem treating that differently, I think if a member misses. And I would go so low as to say two meetings in a row without previously notifying. The chair or staff, then there should be. We could leave it at three or whatever, but. It, it, that represents two or three months with staff and the chair not knowing whether or not quorum will necessarily be met, and that's. Totally unacceptable, that's. It, it's one thing to call in ahead of time and then everyone knows. But to not be doing that, I think. I have no problem treating that differently, that's my two cents.
And I just like to.
You go ahead, Megan.
I just want to point out that the way the language is worded now, it says that. The planning board chairperson may forward a recommendation to the city council to remove the board member, so. If someone had a medical issue and they, they wanted to resume, you know, being on the planning board, but they were out for, say, six months. It's really gonna be up to the chair whether or not to save that person's seat or. To forward a recommendation to city council to remove them, so it kind of falls back on you. So that's just the way it's worded now, but it kind of protects those situations if the planning board wants to keep it that way.
So I guess. I, you know. Something, six, if you miss every other meeting, that seems like a lot. And that would be the six month. Or the, the fifty percent rule. And so I guess I would favor something less than that, twenty five percent, what, I mean, we're just picking numbers at this point. But I would like to trigger that, like, language that says that that triggers a conversation with the member, between the member and the chair. And it, the language to say that the chair is required to do this. Rather than the chair can do this, but so required to have the conversation. And then based on the results of the conversation, a recommendation can be made to city council or not. That seems to me to be. A better way to handle the contingencies like you were talking about, Megan? So, but I don't know what others, others think.
Well, I almost, so it's hard, I, I see the merit in having a personal discussion. I think that's a good idea, but. I'm also thinking that. I, I'm not sure it's most appropriate to require the chair to. Send a recommendation. I mean. If, if it's, if it's the chair may send a recommendation, then that, that to me, as it's written now, it's sort of always presented. A, an, an issue for me, because I think about and I say. Well, you know. Darren, Darren brews great beer, and you know what, he's been on a few times, but I'm not gonna do it, but. By golly, Mr. Staples has never invited me over to the house once for a beer, and so you know what, I am gonna forward his. And you would, you would have the ability to do that, because it says, you know, may. There's discretion there, and so I wonder if one way to remove that discretion. Is, is to somehow build in language that. A, a recommendation is sent. Based on a, a majority vote of the board members. Only to sort of remove that individual. Discretion. The, the, the problem is the individual discretion can be very good, it can be very powerful, right? But when you think of all those things, it's, you never think about. You know, you, it's always limiting how it's gonna be used and appropriately not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, no, I understand, I would be totally comfortable with that, actually, as a chair, that would be great, right? Is the chair would then be required to initiate a conversation with the board. Which I think is totally appropriate.
I wonder if there's a way to initiate feedback from board members instead of having a public discussion about why somebody may have been. Missing meetings.
It does seem like the type of thing that. You might not want to make public, like, I don't know, would that be an executive session, just so we're not airing people's laundry in front of the public?
We could do it.
Whether or not that could qualify as an executive session essentially for a personnel discussion. I'm not a hundred percent sure if it would or not.
That would be, that would be incredibly powerful to know, because if it would, then we would just go into an executive session and discuss that, discuss that.
Yeah, it felt like in reading the materials for today that that. The workbook actually had something about executive sessions, but I'm not discussing, I'm not recalling perfectly. The language.
So it almost sounds like if we went down that route, would it be? Would it be the members' responsibility to show up and? Justify to the board the absences? And if the member didn't show up to that, would there be consequences? I mean, I, I guess that type of thing just makes me. Feel it needs to be fully flushed out if we're gonna add something like that. Personally, I don't know, if, if, if the board's calling me to testify, I might just say, okay, maybe this is the time for me to step down, you know?
Well, there is language for removing a planning board member in ordinance. And so, the way it works now, the chairperson would forward the recommendation. But the city council can't remove a planning board member without giving them a. An opportunity to publicly address the council on whatever the issue is, I, I forget the exact wording, right, it's not a hearing per se, but. So we might want to adopt that here, and as Mr. Staples said, that's. Look, if you're out for a legitimate reason, you probably don't have an issue, at least if it's an executive session coming in and saying, look, look, I've had some health issues. This is why I haven't been here. This is one I think, you know, this may resolve, then. But if it's just because you don't feel like showing up, well. Yeah, you might not want to go through that anyway and just say, okay, you know, right, and not that you're trying to push people out, but you. Trying to encourage people to make a decision that's appropriate for them and for the city, right?
So I think executive session might actually be appropriate here, I'm just looking at. Some of the language, but one of the. Conditions is executive session may be held, only a public discussion could be reasonably expected to damage the invitation. Individuals' reputation, or the individual's right to privacy would be violated.
Yeah, see, there you go, so that's executive session. Right there, and I, I would like to, I would like the language to say, not that they have the opportunity to address the board, but that. The board, so if we choose to go on the board taking action, or even if we go on the chairperson alone taking action. That neither the chairperson nor the board could take action until. The person is afforded the opportunity to speak to either the chair or the board in that executive session. Right, like, not like, oh, well, we'll give you the opportunity to come show up. You know, but like saying like, no, we can't do it until we've given them that opportunity, right? Does that make sense?
So you would say that the process then would be. Need, we need to have an executive session to discuss attendance. You're invited to executive session at this time. We have that executive session. And if they don't show, they don't show, and the board makes whatever decision it makes. But the invitation has to be made.
Right, yeah, they, they have to be given the opportunity to, to be present and be there.
I agree completely, and the way it's written now, that's not required.
Yeah, no, yeah, you're right.
So, Steph, do you think you have enough to be able to draft something?
Yeah, I think so. I'm thinking of doing it as like attract changes to the existing policies if that works with the board.
That would be good for me. Thank you. And the last item you have on there, unless, does anyone else have anything to say about attendance?
Well, I think we covered. The consequences, but what, at, at what number of missed meetings does that happen? Is that, I mean, we had six, we had two, is, where are we?
Well, the, the board, it sounded like people were saying twenty five percent, so that would be three.
Would that, that'd be three overall, though, with the, the two consecutive ones without any notification, be still a, a reason to. Enact this as well.
What about using or more language? Which gives some, some latitude for exactly what you were just suggesting, Mr. Bergeron, so three or more. Then would trigger an executive session.
Well, I guess Riley brings up a good point, I guess, if, if we use twenty five percent and the threshold is three. Really doesn't matter if they're, they've given notice or not, right, because right now, it's, they haven't given notice for three. Right, so, give notice, not give notice, the three triggers. Trigger something, period, right, so.
Yep.
And that's in a twelve month period?
Yeah.
Okay.
Not a calendar year, but a twelve month period.
Okay.
I guess. I wonder, does this, does this put like an undue burden on staff to keep a scoreboard? You know of.
I, I think staff already keeps a, they keep a running list of who has missed meetings and who has attended.
Okay.
They already keep that, Mr. Staples, yeah.
Isn't it also in the minutes?
Rhonda does a good job tracking all that, of course.
But I've seen Rhonda's spreadsheet. So. Alright, the last item for, on policies and procedures was findings, staff?
Yeah, so we don't have anything specific in the policies and procedures for findings. We included in the information that you received. The requirements and the ordinance for findings, and so you could take a look at that and then. Update the policies and procedures if you would like to lay out a process for how the findings are created and what that format looks like. And how the planning board relays those findings to the applicant. We just recommend. Either matching what's in the ordinance or. Amending the ordinance if there's a different process that the planning board would rather do.
That's your comments from the planning board on this? I dumped my paper, so.
So my preference would be to align with the ordinance for the following reason, and this may be an inappropriate assumption, however. It has been my experience that whenever there is question as to the legality of an ordinance, it is vetted by. An attorney, so my assumption is gonna roll that the language in the ordinance. Has been vetted at some point by an attorney, and I would rather default to. That surety than to. Necessarily make up our own and then have to go through the vetting process again, um, only because I don't necessarily have an issue, but. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, though, Megan, the ordinance says the whole planning board has to sign it?
Um, so I thought that was the case, um, sorry, I thought it was muted, um. But it actually says for site plan, um, that the findings by the planning board shall be in writing. Um, so it doesn't specifically say in writing by every planning board member. Um, so I thought it had said that somewhere, but I must have been mistaken.
So it sounds like we could default to the chair doing it and totally be in line with.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, subdivision, it says the planning board shall convey in writing to the developer their final action. Um, I think the chair can convey messages from the planning board perfectly fine.
Yep, yeah, I would agree, I, I would, the pla- the chair is already there signing, uh, uh, well, I guess, wh- what is it now, like? You don't have to sign my Lars, right? Like, there's site plans to sign, but the last couple of times I'd gone in, there were no my Lars, which I thought was funny, but. Um.
Y- yeah, I've done both, so.
Yeah, so the, the point being, the chair is already there to sign stuff. You know what I mean, it makes it efficient for staff, staff doesn't have to track down the entire planning board, all the members that were at a meeting when the, when that. Vote was taken or whatever, the chairperson can just, assuming the chairperson was the chair during that meeting, like, roll with, you know?
Agreed. Anyone else? I personally agree, go, you know, doing, following what has been vetted by council, and I, and I mean legal counsel. Sounds like the right. The right way forward. And if that means the chair, that means the chair.
I just want to make sure I understand correctly, in the policies and procedures, do you want to have a section that says findings? And all findings shall be in accordance with the sections of the ordinance?
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Okay.
All right. Moving along, and does anyone have any further comments on our policies and procedures?
I'd like to put a note in there regarding, um. Members and, uh, prohibiting, um, tiggers in the background at, um.
I was just writing that down.
Were you, yeah, no, I'm sorry, that was just, uh.
Holding up the. Hey, Merry Christmas, everybody. There's Winnie the Pooh.
Oh, my.
Gonna pick the better spot in the house to sit.
That's right.
Um. Excellent, so we'll put that right in there, I expect to see that next meeting. Um, we now come to item eight on the agenda, public comment. At this time, uh, we'd like to invite, um, we don't need a motion, I think, to open this, so I'd like to invite members of the co- public to, um. If they wish to address the board about anything, to raise their hand and state their name and address and address. The board. Seeing no hands, I would move us to item nine, planning board items for discussion. Anyone have anything? Mr. Staples, I know you do.
Sure, you want me to give you a, uh, update on the comp plan committee, uh, we met. Uh, last month, I guess it was, um, and had our first meeting, uh, more of an introductory thing, uh, I think the. Uh, the goal of the comp plan committee at this point is to not do a complete rewrite of the comp plan, but, uh. Surgically go through each section and make a few changes here and there. Um, so at this point, at, at our next meeting, I believe, we're going to break up of, uh, the complaint into a few pieces. And establish a few subcommittees to do some of the work outside of our regular meetings. Um, so I'm kind of looking forward to seeing what that looks like, I'm not sure at this point, um. Oh, and they, we, we established that, uh, there was gonna be a chair of the comp plan committee, and I was nominated for that. So, that needs to go through council, apparently, um, I'm not sure why, but. Uh, that was not on this past week's agenda, so I'm not currently the chair of the comp plan committee. So, but that, that's, uh, that's it, right? Did you have anything to add to that, Mr. Duball?
No, I think that's it, um, and you are the nominee, as far as I can tell.
Nobody else wanted it, I, I think I got it by default.
Everybody was running for the hills. Um, great, anyone else have anything? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item ten miscellaneous, upcoming items for January.
So the only item that I know of right now is, um. The city manager would like to do a presentation on the capital improvement plan, um, just a brief five minute presentation to the board. Um, we'll continue our discussion on policies and procedures, we might have some projects rolling in for January, um. Or then maybe for February, I just don't know for sure yet.
And then we have the new Auburn. Form-based code.
Right. Yeah, we'll work on, um, getting that information sent out, hopefully by the end of this week, so they have ample time to take a look at all of it for the meeting.
Great, thank you. Um, that brings us to item eleven.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
On favor. That's everyone, all right, thanks y'all.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.